This will be a regular meeting of the City Eureka Springs City Council. Clerk, establish the corner, please.
Joyce Zeller?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Nikki Schneider?
Here.
Terry McLung?
Here.
Dee Perkypile?
Here.
We have six.
Everybody, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Next will be approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
Some move.
Second.
I need to add Ms. Melissa Green to nomination position one, HDC. For my part. Yes?
I'd like to eliminate under new business number one. I haven't received any feedback from either of the taxi cab services, so...
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Number one is out under new business. Mr. Mitchell?
Under unfinished business, I'd like to postpone, even though it says until June, but the second meeting in June, the discussion of demolition by neglect for tonight.
Number three?
Number three, yes, sir.
Okay. Made a second, then? Anybody else? If not?
I got David saying it, I didn't get a second.
Second.
Yeah. Okay, so for clarity, number one, or number three under unfinished, number one under new business is out. The other one's postponed. And we're adding Ms. Green to the nomination for HDC position number one. Any further? All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next will be approval of the minutes, vermin of the 29th, 2013.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So moved. Moves the Senate Commission Committee Authority reports expired terms. First up would be planning, Bibbly.
Since your last meeting, planning hasn't had a meeting yet because y'all were off schedule, so we have not addressed number seven and number eight under unfinished business. I'd just like to let y'all know that. And then, we're very busy all of a sudden. Tomorrow night, we have a meeting. We have a commercial construction review of 105 East Van Buren, which is the lumberyard. We had a commercial construction review for a storage unit at the cell tower, but that was taken off. I don't know why exactly. And we have a lot of public hearings coming up. We have a public workshop at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, to go over the definitions in our municipal code of 140813. We have public hearing at 6:00 on June 25th for a conditional use permit, one unit B&amp;B at 30 King Street. We have upcoming public hearing at 6:00 on July 9th for a 200-foot rural variance at 8 Washington. Also, on July 9th is when we have the public hearing for rezoning South Main Street, R1 to C1. So we do have a lot of things at the planning commission. And also, I wanted to let you know that the ordinance that you received, removing the front corner setbacks, is just what we asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be CAPC. I don't think we have a report on that one. On hospital report, we have the nomination of Ms. Susan Tortalot for position number two on the hospital board from last time. Yes, sir?
I've moved to approve the nomination of Susan Tortalot. Tortalot?
Yeah. Made a second, any discussion on it? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six, zero, zero. Thank you. Number five. Next will be parks. We don't have a report from that. There again, HDC, there's the nomination for Melissa Green as position number one.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask something about that right quick since you're going by? I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and accept Melissa Green, since she served on HDC for so many years, and we are pretty well aware of her, and is also currently on planning.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on it? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, six, zero, zero. Thank you. Senator, commission doesn't have a report, brings us to public comment. First up is Mr. Bonzinski.
Back again. Last week, Mr. Joy got up and spoke to you, and he said that after his attorney spoke with the city attorney, interestingly, what he said was that after having that conversation and being informed what the law was, what did he say at that meeting? He said, "I only comply with the law. I only rent landlord tenant." Well, if that's the case, there is no problem here. We don't need any amendment of any ordinance. All we have to do is enforce the ordinance. But the proof of the matter is, and I pointed this out last year, Mr. DeVito, I think, was here at the meeting here, where I showed that although he says he's renting landlord tenant, that is totally false. I gave the city attorney, actually had a copy of the ad that he was running last year, Weekly Rentals. The other thing here, there was some mention of fact that one of the council point out that there were threats being made. Well, there have been threats being made. That's what, the threats are coming from Mr. Joy. What I'm handing out here is Mr. Joy's blackmail threat to my wife, plus a conversation that resulted in a false police report being filed. I'm handing this to the chief law enforcement officer in the city here, the mayor. There's a copy of the tape in there and the false police report. So what we have here is two crimes committed here. Number one, harassing communication to my wife, which is a misdemeanor, plus filing a false police report against me, claiming that I was harassing him, making a false telephone call, which resulted in harassment to him. The tape speaks the truth. The man lied on the police report. He lied when he said that he's only renting landlord tenant. And since it was brought up that, well, even the newspaper article today, that threats have been made, I just want to make it perfectly clear where those threats are coming from. They're coming from the gentleman who's sitting right over there. This is a crime, and if, since this telephone call was made with the threat that if I came down here and spoke against Weekly Rentals, that he was going to make some charge that we were falsely claiming homestead in Florida, which the people down there in Florida, after reading that, his complaint, said, "Well, this confirms all our beliefs about inbreeding in Arkansas, and also explains why Governor Huckabee and Clinton fled the state." So there's your complaint, Mr. Joy. Now, I'm asking the mayor to perform his duty as the chief law enforcement officer to take appropriate legal action against Mr. Joy. And you notice here, in the statute which I handed out here, it said that if this telephone call was made to conceal criminal activity, which is illegal activity which I've accused them of, of renting night to night, then it's not a misdemeanor, it's a felony. And I ask the chief law enforcement officer to take appropriate action in this case. Thank you very much.
Mr. Joy, you're next.
Joseph Joy, 265 Spring Street. I'm not going to address any of Mr. Jozinski's allegations at this table. I'm going to ask you to please to look at the conflict in the law as it relates to weekly rentals and your other codes on tourism, and fix them, okay? And to kindly remember the fact that we've been renting now for a year, and we believe we should be grandfathered. That's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to unfinished business. What is it?
Investigator.
What is it? This will be part of the file. Brings us to unfinished business. Number one is the update on town hall meeting. Motion to discuss.
Some move?
Second.
I spoke with Sally Gurrell, and she's tentatively agreed to be the facilitator for the town hall meeting. She's got a lot of experience as a facilitator, and she didn't have her calendar there when I talked to her, and she seems to think that that's open, and she tentatively has agreed to act as the facilitator. And that's about all I've got for you today.
Thanks, sir. No further? We'll move on to number two?
No, got further here.
I'm sorry.
Are we doing a workshop before this, Mr. DeVito? I forget if we are or not, and I don't remember a date, so I apologize.
Yeah, well, we've not set a date for a workshop, but we probably should have something in July to firm up just exactly what our agenda's going to be, the agenda for the meeting.
Any further? Okay, that brings us to number two, be third ring ordinance 2181. Motion to discuss.
Some moved.
Second.
Floor is open. It should be.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2181 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Have a roll call, though.
Dee Perkypile?
Yes.
Joyce Zeller?
Yes.
David Mitchell?
Yes.
Terry McLung?
Yes.
James DeVito?
Yes.
Nikki Schneider?
Yes.
Six, zero. Ordinance 2181 and ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code Title IV.
This will be. I have to approve ordinance number 2181 on its third reading.
Second.
Made a second, then? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's a roll call.
Is it a roll call?
Yeah.
I think you just keep changing the rules.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us past number three, which has been postponed, to number four, ordinance on weekly rentals. Motion to discuss.
Some move.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Weaver, up first.
I went back through, as council asked, and looked at the ordinance that was prepared for the last session of, or for the last city council that was voted down on their second read-through. I would propose really no changes to this, other than I think that the attached list that is non-existent on what you've been handed tonight, be created with at least severe input from the planning commission. I would suggest that they are in a position to hold hearings to create that list, and to enforce our current planning laws, so that someone doesn't get on that list that does not deserve to be there, and that no one hopefully has missed that deserves to be there, rather than to have this body spend hours trying to develop that list, or relying on me or someone else to create that list for you. I think the planning commission is in the best position to actually do that for you.
Mr. DeVito?
Question for the attorney?
Yes.
Can we go ahead and pass this ordinance, and then add at a later date an addendum after planning has finished with identifying properties?
I would suggest that the best way to handle it would be maybe to do the first and second reading, but not to actually pass it until we have a list for you, unless we change the wording and say that, instead of the attached list, say the list to be attached upon further review by planning.
Well, maybe if we get to the third reading and we're not there yet, we will, I would champion that to go that route.
Ms. Schneider?
Who decided we were passing this? The city attorney was supposed to be doing an amended ordinance based on what failed number 2167. Did you do one?
I don't think one was appropriate. I think that one right there is appropriate.
Okay, well, you didn't say that, and I thought I was missing something, but just because we asked him to do an amended thing, does not mean it's going to pass. We're supposed to be discussing what's going on.
Mr. Mitchell?
In light of discussion, I find that the ordinance that the attorney has brought back, that spent, that the last council spent six, seven months working on, and decided to not pass it because of data they had at the time, but is now before us, serves to put this issue to rest, serves to contain the few businesses that might continue to operate under this, and once planning has had an opportunity to create that list, I suspect it will be much less than 10 if they apply the fact of what's in here, who's been collecting taxes, et cetera, and the fact that you cannot transfer ownership, and there's some strong restrictions in here. I think this is a good ordinance to pass on the issue of weekly rentals, and therefore, I make a motion that we pass ordinance number 2167. I forget how to do it. I'm doing, not doing it right. I've never, I withdraw. I withdraw it. Withdraw.
Okay, I just have a few questions regarding this ordinance here. We have punishable by a fine of up to $500 per violation for a period of 30 days or less. And I understand that 31 days was a result of CAPC language, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I have a question, how do you enforce that? How do you, how do you, how would the city enforce that 31-day minimum? I mean, if somebody comes in and says, "I'll pay $800 for 31 days," and they stay there a week, I mean, how do you enforce that?
If the landlord allows someone else to occupy it within the same 31-day period, they would be in violation thereof, would be my expectation the court would find. So allowing them to, say they were renting it for a 31-day period, paying a fee, and then moving out before the end of the 31 days, and allowing someone else to move in during that 31 days, would be prima facie evidence to a court that they were in fact accepting the money for a time period shorter, because they were not holding the property open for reoccupancy by the original tenant who had rented for the 31-day period.
Okay, understanding that, how do we, or how do you propose that the city enforces that? Do we send somebody out and check each one of these places? We don't do that now, currently.
We do not do that currently for a lot of our laws, but when it is brought to the attention of the police, and they make an investigation and find it to be so, then they can and do seek warrants and/or citations, depending on the given situation, and have the individual or individuals brought in before a court.
Okay. Once again, I find that singling out certain people by doing that, and it's rife, it's liable to allow people, because of vendettas and personal issues with each other, to start tackling on each other. It just seems to be kind of a big club to be using. And I have a couple other questions for other council get involved. I don't think we should, we should pass this the way it is now, because we don't have any input from planning on the businesses that are listed in Appendix A attached into this ordinance, legal non-conforming uses existing on the effective date of this ordinance. And I think we really need to have that before we do that, before we try to pass this. And my next question is, would the, you know, currently we have, it's a statement and a question, currently there are nine licenses for R1 based in, on the 199 licensing. But according to the CAPC, there are only four currently operating businesses. And so, my question is, why are we all of a sudden so concerned about these four currently operating businesses, much less the nine existing? I don't see that that, you know, I guess the bigger question is, would these be considered to be legally non-conforming uses, these existing 199 businesses?
That is what I think that you should charge your planning commission with determining which ones, if any of those, meet the current requirements. The current requirements do require collection of a tax, it does require rental for certain terms, it does require that they are remitting those taxes.
My understanding is that the current, the current license holders that are operating collect taxes. They collect whatever it is, 13-point, whatever the total tax is. They collect that tax currently if they operate. So could we have the planning commissioner address this on this subject?
First of all, let me remind you where this came from. We have restrictions in R1 that do not allow any more tourist lodging, period. And then, it was found out that there were some renting their homes without licenses. And so, that, they were saying that they were just renting their homes as a landlord tenant. There's nothing in our code that does not, that says they can't do that. If you had a second home and you wanted to rent it out to me, you could do that by our code. Well, because there was a little area that said you could do that, then people started doing it with transient guests or tourists, which made it a tourist lodging, and they should not have been doing it. So when this ordinance came the first time, the reason that it did fail is because everyone that had a 199 was attached to it as an Appendix A, and they were going to be put on the legally non-conforming list, even though I believe, and many others believe, they were renting to tourists, which is illegal. I can support this without an appendix added to it at this point, because the people that are on that list, if they believe that they are in the right, if they believe they should be put on the list as legally non-conforming, then they will come and they will bring their landlord tenant contracts, and they will bring their licenses, and they will say, "This is what we've been doing, we can show you how long we've been doing it, and it will be to another resident in our town, and then I will agree to add them to that list." If it's to somebody from Louisiana last week, and somebody from Georgia next week, then that's illegal, and it should not be added to the list.
Like a number of our laws, it usually starts with a complaint, noise complaints, feeding the deer. We all understand that most people abide by the law. I think that's probably why there's not been a rush of people to take out what they presume is a license. 199 does not give you the license to do anything except collect tax, doesn't enable you to violate the law because you have a 199. We have categories of licenses to establish where you can conduct business and where you can't conduct business. And I don't know why they're under the assumption that having that catch-all category allows them to conduct what in essence is a tourist lodging, which is illegal by our standards. So, in a small town with a limited police force, a lot of our laws come from complaints, and that's where a lot of this is going to be generated from. And no, it's not going to pit neighbor against neighbor, that's just the reality of the world we live in. Police can't be everywhere all the time, and, you know, as long as the neighborhood's fine and nobody's complaining about it, there's no problem. But when the neighbors start complaining, we have a responsibility as the governing body in this community to address the situation, and that's where we are today. The reason we felt like we weren't going to pass this on the second reading, and I guess I'm the only one here that was a part of that, is because we felt at the time that the laws were clear enough, but obviously, they weren't, because people kept doing what they're doing. So here we are again, and we, going to the 30 days addresses the issue with the CAPC. It reduces the influx and the turnover of people in our residential areas, and that's what we're trying to protect here. By going to 30 days, you don't have the turnover population, even though it is mall renting to the guy looking for a job in town, there are appropriate places in town in C1 that do weekly rentals. I can tell you from somebody that employs people in this community, if you look in the newspaper on any given day, there might be one apartment for rent in Eureka Springs. And what's happening is inventory is being taken out that could be used for monthly rentals for people who live and work in this community. We just built a $10 million high school, and our population is dwindling. And part of the reason the population is dwindling is because the inventory of homes and apartments are being rented out on a tourism basis, and that drives up what little rental properties are, and basically pushes people who would otherwise reside in this community and become a part of this community. It drives them to Holiday Island, it drives them to outline areas, it does not invest them in this community as participating taxpayers in the community. We need more people living here. Our population is dwindling, and we need to address this. We've also got a dwindling high school population, and if we don't have adequate facilities for people to live in this community, for families to come here and make a start in Eureka to come here and make a start in Eureka Springs, we're going to lose the identity of the community because people can go to other places like Branson. Branson really doesn't have an identity. We have an identity as a community, I think that draws people here. And I'm afraid when we lose that identity, we lose a part of what Eureka Springs is all about.
Mr. Mr.
I think the attorney has helped us quite well in planning quite well when they say that paying all appropriate fees and taxes with no lapse of operation. I think based on what Alderman Perkypal mentioned, if there's only four people on that list that looks like they've been paying CAPC taxes since this issue was started discussion back in June of '12 and we're already up to June of '13, we've got a year's worth of data for planning or anybody. So I think the people that were originally on that list that might be wanting to be considered to be grandfathered under is going to be significantly small. This is a good opportunity to go ahead and put this on, pass this and put it on its first reading. Again, with taking three readings, there's plenty of time to establish, as the chairperson planning said, the final list.
Mr. Mr.
April 19th, we got a letter from the building inspector. Did anybody read it? Out of several paragraphs, the very, very last line, and this is in regards to the weekly. At this time, according to the definitions in the code, weekly rentals are permitted in R1. So they are not criminals for doing this. And I'm sorry, Mr. Jasingseek, but competition is good for the soul. Those are the complaints that we've had. They snuck in, did this illegally, that it's unfair competition. Well, excuse me. Too bad. Suck it up. I'm so tired of this. These threats that are going on and everything else, it's ridiculous. Adjust the law, fine, whatever. Now, I've got an example, in fact, two examples of why weeklies are important. My recently married son, thank God he's retired, is coming home Thursday for a week. He's got a 20th class reunion. His new wife is extremely allergic to my cats, so they can't stay with us. They don't want to stay in a hotel for a week. They can't afford a B&amp;B for a week. Where do they stay? He's not a transient. He was born and raised here, but he's not a local because he's still stationed in California. Where does he stay? That's example one. Example two, in two weeks, one of my really good friends from back home is coming out here. She's going to be here for a week. Same financial situation. She's looking to buy a place here, hopefully to retire. She doesn't see anything she can afford or like. She's going to rent. If she can't find anything to rent that she likes and that's affordable, she'll probably look in George, I believe is her second choice. The point is, where does she stay? This is why weeklies are good. It shouldn't matter if you're a local, if you're a visitor, or if you're someone who was sent here temporarily to do a job. Somebody staying for a week or a couple of weeks isn't going to hurt anybody and it could help people out, not only the people staying, but the people renting. Why is this such a problem when we have five zillion tourist lodging things? Why is a crummy week so bad? They can stay overnight. They can stay a month. They can stay six months, but they can't stay a week? This doesn't even make sense. Somebody explain it to me.
If I, I'd like to address this to planning. It's my understanding that in R1, you're not allowed to rent to transients. Is that true? In an R1 district, you can't rent to transients and you can't get a CUP to do that in an R1 district?
That is correct for a tourist lodging. There are some B&amp;Bs that they have CUPs for, but the law was changed and said that there will be no more tourist lodging, which is...
Okay, and we are, okay, that answers my question. And we want to define tourist lodging as someone who stays less than 30 days. Is that where we're at here? What we're trying to do is prevent in R1s, I think R1, R2, and R3 have to be addressed separately in this ordinance. And in R1, we want to prevent this constant turnover in these R1 residential districts. And in order to do that, we're trying to say that if you're going to rent something to stay in an R1, you have to rent it for 30 days. Is that where we're at now? Is that what we're doing? Okay. So then...
31.
31 days. Okay, 31 days. But you see where I'm getting at. So why cannot we put, and we're not going to allow CUPs in R1? Okay, so why cannot we put a clause in this ordinance addressing R1 and say that there will be no rentals of less than 30 days to tourist lodgings, nor will there be a landlord-tenant relationship for less than 30 days in any dwelling located in an R1 residential area? Then that would take care of everything. We don't have to define tourists. We don't have to define if you're not going to stay there for 30 days. And as to, Mickey, as I understand it, the reason they want to do this for a couple of nights instead of, or weekly instead of monthly is because they can get more money. What is the average fee for somebody renting one of these residential area things that have housekeeping facilities? Does that cost less than it costs to stay in a motel? And motels generally around here, as I understand it, go for about $39 or $40 a night during the week and then it goes up to about 65 on the weekend. Does it actually cost less to rent one of these little cottages in an R1 district for a week than it does to rent a motel? What are the rates, the going rates here? Does anybody know?
Actually, what this ordinance does is exactly what you're saying is it removes the need to define because it says you're not going to rent to anyone for less than 31 days in an R1, R2, or R3. You are only going to rent there for a longer period. Unless you already meet the requirement for a CUP under R2 or R3, or whether you are tourist lodging in those allowed zones, or whether you happen to fall into one of the B&amp;B definitions, or you're grandfathered under this. This would not grandfather in those that are renting to transients. It only grandfathers those in that have been established running a landlord-tenant operation.
Well, we're trying to avoid even landlord-tenant for less than 30.
It does that. It says you cannot rent to anyone.
My problem with this is that I'm not seeing those words specifically. And when you don't put it down in words of one syllable specifically in an ordinance and say exactly what it is you mean, you're always going to find somebody who finds a way around it. And do these people have to pay for the entire 30 days upfront? Do they have to deposit the entire amount? And if they don't, are they going to small claims court in order to pay that landlord? Or how is this arranged? That, again, I think we need to say that you have to show evidence that they've paid the amount or they've signed some kind of a note or something so that if they don't pay for 30 days, if they move out early, they're going to get sued. Because we just, this doesn't have enough teeth in it, is what I'm saying. It's not specific enough for people who, hey, the average public person reads at an eighth-grade level. We've got to make it plainer than this. Okay, well, I'm beginning to lose my patience with this whole thing.
Okay. Well, it's 31 days.
31 days. Yeah, okay, yes.
It'll be 20.
But this question is actually for you, Beverly. Can the current existing, the people that currently have the 199 licenses to operate as weekly rentals in R1, can they come before you and request that to be considered to be tenant landlord?
It's my understanding they will have to bring documentation proving that they have been in order to be on this list. Mr. Perkypal, you don't know that the planning commission does a thorough job to try to make sure everybody with CUPs are in compliance with what their CUPs say. Some have been caught doing more CUP, you know, more rooms than they're supposed to or more dwellings than they're supposed to. And when they had to have a public hearing and come to the planning commission, now some of them are on this list. So I would like for them to have to make sure that they bring me their tenant landlord agreements and show me that, you know, not me, but the planning commission, that they have been in business doing this legally for a while before you grandfather them or make them legally non-conforming.
My point is not in grandfathering. My point is anybody could come to you and say, listen, we, you know, we have this extra house. You just said that earlier tonight. We have an extra house over here and I'd like to rent it out with, you know, landlord-tenant for a month at a time or more. So those, so what I'm saying is, the people that are currently operating like weekly rentals could come to you and say, okay, we're not going to operate as weekly rentals anymore. We'd like to operate as tenant landlord. Correct?
There's no license for you to rent your home as a monthly rental. If you have an extra home you want to rent out, you don't have to get a license for that. You don't have to pay taxes for that. That is your rental income, your rental property. I mean, you have to deal with the United States government, but as our city, we don't have codes for that.
So I guess my question is, if these weekly rental folks are now realizing that they probably can't operate like this anymore, so they could operate as tenant landlord and not seek anybody's permission, correct?
If they're doing it for 31 days or more.
Okay. Well, and the point is, are we going, and that goes back to my section one here, you know, how do you enforce that? I mean, do you go by and check everybody that's, you know, that's, I mean, other than by complaint, do you go back and check everybody that has a rental agreement for their home or their apartment or their room? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to point out that by putting this, it's very onerous here. It's $500 per violation. Each day of any rental of 30 days or less, each day, shall be considered a separate offense. I mean, this, you know, so why would, if we passed this, why would anybody continue to break the law? They wouldn't. They'd say, we're just going to have a tenant landlord agreement here and we don't need to come to you. We don't need to come to council. We don't need to come to planning.
Right. And when we check for the CUPs, we look at all their website advertising. We look at, you know, the properties. If we find that there's two, I mean, they could lose their whole CUP. They could lose their whole livelihood. So I don't know why anybody would want to do that illegally and jeopardize that.
Well, all I'm saying is, we only have four operating licenses right now. Those people could come in and say, okay, we're not doing that anymore. We're, you know, and we don't have to tell you what we're doing because we're going to rent it out on a monthly basis, on a 31-day basis. Right?
And then you would have, hopefully you would have voters and residents in your neighborhoods instead of transient guests, which is the whole point.
Mr. Mr. Mr.
I think a lot of this weekly rental got distorted when one of those weekly rentals very publicly seemed to be running their lodging nightly and irritating somebody who likes to make CDs. I think you will take a look at that list and you'll find a lot of people on that list, at least three or four of those people have ran a weekly lodging and pretty well stuck to it and were tried to be, I do believe, honest in the way they applied it and follow what they interpreted to be the law, getting 199s, et cetera. I think it should move council to seriously take a look at what the city attorney has brought back to this table, unchanged from when it was presented in November of '12 to that council for passage, with the exception that by the third reading, we should have from planning a list of the people that would be on the appendix for grandfathered. I'm finished.
Mr. 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 I think you're next.
Okay. The ordinance that David was talking about starts out, "An ordinance prohibiting weekly rentals of property located within any residential zone." It's been more or less bandied about strictly R1. This thing says any. So aside from the fact that at the last meeting it pointed out, you're taking away personal property rights, you're regulating where you don't have the right to regulate, you're regulating where if this persists, the state will step in and make a statewide right of property ownership and we don't want to go there, let me tell you, that's what's going to end up happening. You can't tell people what they can and cannot do in regards to this kind of a situation except to a point. Weekly rentals, if they can stay one day, they can stay a month, they can stay six months, why can't they stay a week? That is discrimination. And I ask one more time, who's going to take in my son and his wife for a week? Who's going to take in my best friend for a week?
What's she look like?
She's very attractive, actually, and single. But I'm serious. Where can they stay?
I would caution the councilwoman that city councils have the right to pass zoning regulations which remove property rights that are not being used. You are not trying to remove property rights that are being used properly and legally because you are creating a non-conforming list. You are not banning weekly rentals throughout the entire town. You're only reducing the number of occupiable lots within the town by a justified amount, leaving commercial real estate that can be rented on a weekly basis or shorter than 31-day basis. You are leaving industrial properties that can be and you're leaving agricultural properties. The Supreme Court of the United States in addressing the issue has found that as long as you do not completely regulate an entity out of your community, you can regulate it to a very limited space. They have specifically applied that to various types of what they consider nuisance properties. And if you consider it to be a nuisance to have transient guests within your R1, R2, or R3, or all three, you can regulate them legally out of those areas without fear that the state is going to step in and crush you.
This situation actually developed when planning was going over codes and found out that there was a loophole here. Ward got out and it spread through the community and people started taking advantage of what they thought was an availability to them. It really was not about two people pitting themselves against one another. And I think you can go back and talk to Beverly on that one. Staying with that thought, this isn't about competition. And we're talking about residential zones, so we shouldn't even be talking about competition within residential zones. Competition is for commercial zones. We've got a lot of property sitting up on the highway for sale. And part of the reason is because you can just buy a house for a lot less than you can buy a piece of commercial property and start renting it by the night or by the week. You don't have to get a CUP. You don't have to have a public hearing. You just go down to City Hall and get a 199 for $50. And there you are, you're in business. It's business. They're conducting business in residential zones. This is not about competition. This is about what's right. And what is right is all those people who applied for CUPs, who went through the process so that they could... so that they could rent their rooms in residential zones. Every time we allow something like this unchallenged, that's a potential customer for somebody that has a property on the highway. Every time you allow commerce in residential zones, you dilute the value of commercial property. And I'd really like to see our commercial property move. We don't seem to have that problem with residential, and this could be one of the reasons why. So, that being said, I make a motion to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
I second that.
For a discussion. Mr. Miller.
Discrimination if you allow one day, one month, and six months and not one week. That is discrimination. Just so you know, that is discrimination. And everything you said about CUPs, James, is exactly right, which is why at the last meeting, I said we need to give it its own name, its own regs, its own CUP. Now, in R1, no new CUPs are permitted. So whether we allow it to go on in R1 or stick it strictly with two and three, that would be up to this table. Or if we make a special amendment that for weeklies, for a weekly CUP, that would be permitted in R1 even though it says no new tourist lodging, because the week could be tourist, it could be work-related, it could be like my son. That's why I said we need to do that. But this one, as it stands, any residential zone, so on and so forth, it's discrimination, it's unfair. They've been following the law.
Thank you, Renee.
You know, in all fairness, there are a lot of tourist lodgings, whether it's cottage or B&amp;B in, in the historic residential. And I've been involved with it in a lot of different ways as a Realtor, as planning commission, as city council, and I have been on both sides of the table many, many times. And those people went through an ordeal to get those CUPs. Nearly every one of them. Never were they cut and dried. And in all fairness to those people, anybody that's trying to slip in on it and operate without following the process is not doing it correctly. It's not fair to those that went through all the hoops to get there. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the R2, I think, is, is pretty well fine in that they can still, in R2, you can go and get a conditional use permit to operate tourist lodging. So that's not a problem. So if you want to rent it out for one night or a week, it doesn't matter. But in the R1, it should not be permitted. It just can't be. One night, two nights, week, doesn't matter. You know, that type of lodging that we're talking about is probably less 10%, maybe 20% in equivalent of income for one week as opposed to tourist lodging. You know, it's not, it's not the same. They're not apples and apples. They're apples and oranges. No matter how you try to lump them together, they're not, Mickey. And so, you know, it's, there's just, you can't allow it to happen. It's not fair to those that have come before. It's just not.
I agree. I agree.
And, and weekly is, you know, you can't call it something else because you've got to call a spade a spade.
A weekly is a weekly.
No. It's, 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 all it is is an exaggerated way of saying nightly for tourist lodging.
Ms. Sellers.
Can I call for the question?
Second.
Well, it can't end discussion.
We're still discussing. Sorry.
You've got a previous question, and you have to do it in a certain way to stop the discussion. Just calling for the question doesn't count.
Okay, second question. Okay, well, then, can I have the floor for a minute? Can I call for the question and end the discussion?
Yes.
That's what I would like to do. I think we need to vote on this. It's enough. It's enough.
So, calling for the previous question?
Well, putting, giving it a number and putting it on its first reading.
And you seconded calling the question?
I seconded.
Oh, thank you.
No, I called, I seconded calling the question.
Thank you. Okay.
So you need a roll call to end discussion.
Thank you.
Does everybody understand the roll calls?
No.
To end the, to end the...
End discussion.
Yeah.
Roll call to end discussion.
End the discussion. Call for the previous question. End the discussion. The roll call vote.
Ms. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
No.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
No.
Ms. Snyder.
No.
Three-three.
I think it needs some more discussion, so my question would be no.
Okay. Bill.
I think Mr. Perkypile was next.
Okay. I don't have any problem with this as long as, there's only four existing ones that are actually operating. As long as they come in and, or they quit operating in that fashion and say, and operate as a tenant landlord 31 days or more, that's appropriate. Correct? Correct? Beverly? And she's nodding in the affirmative.
Yes. Clark, ask a question.
The number four came from the list of people who have paid CAPC taxes in 2013. There is still time to open, to keep the 180-day rule door open. So that, that number four is not an absolute. That's all I want to mention.
Whatever the number of people, whatever the number is, those people, by virtue of this discussion that's going on here, it's been in the paper, and it's been a lot of different venues, they should be put on notice that it's probably not going to occur much longer. So if they do want to operate or rent their facilities out, then they should, they should do so, but quit operating, quit collecting taxes. Once again, there we go. We're not collecting taxes anymore, but they will just be operating as a rental unit in the residential area.
They will have to continue to collect the tax because our code specifically says anyone renting for 30 days or less is to collect the tax.
Well, no, hold it. I just said for 31 days.
But they don't have to, if they are legally non-conforming use, they will be allowed to continue to operate renting to landlord-tenant occupants.
Okay, I agree with that.
At a period of less than 30 days.
I agree with that, and I agreed with that. I agreed with that, but what I said was, now they're on notice that they probably are not going to be legally non-conforming, and so could revert to a tenant landlord relationship. And therefore, no taxes are collected if it's for 31 days or more.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anyone, anyone can rent if they properly rent for more than 31 days, 31 or more days.
Ms. Sellers. I'm sorry, Ms. Snyder. Go ahead.
I thoroughly agree with Terry in regards to the CUPs in R1 and whatever. That's why I'm saying, let's give it its own thing, its own name, its own regs, its own CUP. People in R1, and there aren't hardly any, that are doing this should be grandfathered in since they were following the law. They were doing legal business. They shouldn't be punished for that. That way, we have weekly in part of the town. We're protecting our Victorian residential that's like half CUPs anyway, but we're protecting that. We're allowing weekly, and people who want to do it can, and people don't have to stay in the industrial area in order to be there for a week.
Mr. Mitchell.
There is a plethora of weekly rentals on Highway 62. There's the place across from Falkers that have the suites. There's the Brandon Suites on 23. There are, there are plenty of places, as Alderman DeVito said, that offer weekly rental in this town. We have the city attorney who is licensed and sits at this table as our legal counsel who has brought back an ordinance that he has...